Okay, folks. Good morning. Thanks for coming out on a balmy December morning. Appreciate, yeah. Appreciate everybody doing that. Going to try to keep moving today because we've talked about a lot of these things before. We're going to just have Adam start to walk us through. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
All right. But again, appreciate everyone being here. Try to keep it tight.
Okay. So, we need to try to stick to an hour today. So, we're going to try and stay on task on the cottage court to make sure that we get through that. So, let's just quickly take a look at, I'm sorry, Vicki, I think you skipped me in passing out the new copies. All right. So, just, I think everyone has copies, so I'm probably just going to ignore the monitors today if that's good. So, in the cottage court, the primary changes were between the beginning and, I think it was B on page three. So, just reviewing those sections really quickly. We had discussion about the definition of net developable area versus net tract area that we had used in the workforce housing overlay amendments from three or four years ago. I did some comparison of how it was used in this and how the net tract area is defined and used in workforce, and it's not exactly the same. And I think the easiest thing, because we could take a couple of different paths, we could modify the definition of net tract area to make it encompass the components that were within this, including the addition of eliminating the right-of-ways and utility areas. However, that has ripple effects through the workforce housing overlay where it's used there that we would have to now sort of get into and make sure that that didn't change anything materially that we were concerned about. Or simply defining net developable area. And so, though the phrase is similar to one we already used, I do think that's the most simplistic way to go about this is to simply add a new definition to the definitions section that pertains to this section of the ordinance. So, you'll see then what has been added on the top of page one is the definition for net developable area, and it has been modified a little bit from how it was defined within the paragraph to add in the steep slopes into that, which is a component that was part of net tract area but had not previously been part of the net developable area. And we had discussed making sure that that was in there. So, the whole definition reads, "The remaining area of a property after subtracting all wetlands, surface water bodies, areas with steep slopes greater than 25% within the steep slopes overlay district, and public and private rights of way for streets and utilities. Mixed-use sites building footprints, and paved areas for parking and circulation which do not serve the development shall be deducted." And so, that really just took the copy from what was within the paragraph before added the steep slopes. So, I think that's the most simple approach if everyone is good with that. I see nodding heads. Okay. In that first paragraph there where you see the yellow highlighted, we just clarified, actually, I don't think anything changed there. I think it's on the next page, sorry. We cleaned up a couple of pieces in number one to make sure that the urban residential without water and sewer was clear. And then essentially the same in number two, making sure that it was acre of, so 10 units per acre of net developable area, and then clearing up that R1 section under 6A1. We had the discussion last week about building heights, and so, we modified that to 22 feet overall and eliminated the word maximum so that it's the building height permitted for structures, understanding that there may actually be walls that have a height over 22 feet because of the averaging around the building, so that there may be a maximum higher than that. But as we define how you measure building height, it's 22. And I think that gets us through where we left off last week. Okay? All right. So, if everybody is on page three, does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns with the covered main entry porch, private outdoor areas section? We haven't previously flagged anything in there. Okay. The common open space.
All right. Yeah, holler if you have any.
Too cold out this morning. The proximity to open space, you know, I think we've talked about that quite a bit. The private open space versus the open space that is part of the overall development? And then the cottage floor area? Okay.
Yeah. This is new to us, not us, but new to our town, and this language has been tested by our consultants in other towns, and I really appreciate that. I'm concerned when we get into proximity to common open space, not all of it, but we're just getting so minute and so detailed that we may be struggling with exceptions that come to us by virtue of a site plan whenever somebody puts this into force. So, I just raised that point. I think it's fine the way it is because it's been used before, and I couldn't envision physically anything being a real problem, but land, every piece of land is different. And when somebody tries to use this, they might say, "Well, it's a great idea, but I can't do that." And I just, we need to be careful about being too detailed about something we haven't done before.
That makes sense, Peter. Are there things that you would strike? I mean, like you said, this has been pretty, this has been battle-tested, but I'm curious if you think there are provisions that are where it goes too far.
Well, I couldn't get my arms frankly around, "All the cottage units shall be within 60 feet walking distance measured from the nearest entrance of the cottage along the shortest safe walking route to the nearest point of the common open space." I just, sorry, maybe it's the morning, but I, and, but I'm hesitant to recommend striking it because I couldn't get my arms around it. Thanks.
The way I read that was just that it really is another way to keep it really tight, you know, in effect, but I'm open to chatting about that if folks need to, want to.
I guess a question, Adam, is if a developer came and said, "I've got this cottage court plan that I think you might like, but it doesn't comply with some things, including this paragraph," would that, that wouldn't require a variance, it just would be resolved during site plan review? Is that correct?
It is a conditional use permit, so the planning board has some ability to, to wave. So, what I'm wondering is, do we need language like we have in the existing accessory dwelling unit regulation, which obviously is going away because we can't use a conditional use permit, but as it has stood for the last 10 years, we have a section on creation of accessory dwelling units, and it's in accordance with the provision of this section permitted through a conditional use permit administered by the planning board. And then it goes through the conditional use permit application shall contain the following, and one of those is a criteria for written requests for waivers from any of the requirements of the standards. So, I don't, I didn't bring my RSA book with me this morning, but I think we'll have to look at the RSA for conditional use permits and see if that language is already in that RSA, or if we need to provide that power through having it in the ordinance.
I know when we were crafting some other language in another workforce bylaw, we did specifically point out some items that would be subject to a waiver if requested.
You know, it may just make sense to lift this paragraph from the ADU conditional use permit. It all could apply, you know, change ADU to cottage court, and it's a complete application, written statement indicating the applicant's intent and purpose for the creation of the cottage court, list and mailing address of all abutters and the applicant, fees for notifying the abutters and the applicant, written request for waivers from any of the requirements or standards. I mean, that could all apply with the substitution of the...
Okay. I didn't want to bring you to a grinding halt. My recommendation would be let's proceed with it the way it is and if you can get comfortable with that concern.
Nancy, had a question? Oh, sorry, Amy, somebody.
I was just going to say, isn't, don't you think that that paragraph is just really outlining where things are supposed to be? I mean, it's just a form of this is how it should look?
It is, and that's certainly what it's trying to control. I think Peter's hesitancy is that it's kind of a riddle.
Too specific?
You know, that it's just sort of...
Too prescriptive.
How do you measure what is, it's kind of subjective and what is the most safe walking route, and, you know, who's making that determination and...
Developers need clarity and predictability, so I'm trying to make it clear.
No, I agree.
Yeah, but I agree with you, Amy, that the 60, I mean, that whole thing is, if it's 100, it doesn't work, right? Because we all kind of understand that this is after a certain feeling and a certain...
Right.
Vibe, if you will.
It just seems like it's trying to do this.
Right. Yeah. I get that. Nancy, did you have a question?
Well, in the first one, in one, we've talked about how much space is needed for common open space. I'm just wondering if in two, if we read, "At least 90% of the cottage court shall abut the common open space, period," and then use the last sentence, "The common open space shall have cottages abutting at least two sides." I mean, that gives you the intent, I believe, around having cottages around a common space without needing to get into the specific of 60 feet. Just a thought.
And I even wonder if we, you know, if we put the period after that first sentence too, and then maybe simplify that next section to that, maybe it's just 60 feet from the cottage, not from the nearest entrance, you know, that if the cottages can't be wider than, you know, 20-ish feet anyways. So, if the door is centered in one way or the other, and we're talking a difference of five to eight feet, you know, that maybe that's not so necessary to be that, that specific. And then maybe we say, all right, so if we said, "All the cottage units shall be within 60 feet walking distance along the pedestrian path," so that, you know, we, we're defining that it's on a walkway, it's not, you know, cutting across the lawn, but we're not saying that it's the safest or the, you know, whatever that may be. Is that, okay.
Yeah, that is better, but we still have the 60, which I think is part of the operative thing here because in order to keep it tight, I think that's how this works. I think if it gets too big, it defeats the purpose, or it loses the feel.
And I guess maybe, do we care if it's walking distance or just physical distance? Because from a visual perspective, if you're sitting there looking at the development from the outside, which I think this constraint is really meant to keep that aesthetic, if there's a walkway that you really can't see below, you know, some grass blades and planting sticking up, it doesn't really materially change anything. So, do we just leave it at, "All the cottage units shall be within 60 feet of the common space and forget about the walkways and..."
Would that change the design in any way? I'm trying to think through that. Does feet walking, does that keep it tighter somehow, or is that, does it not change it if you just said 60 feet?
I don't see how it changes things dramatically. Right. And whether it's that between that point A and point B is green space or paved walking surface doesn't seem to change a visual...
Right. Yep.
Say what the proposal is.
Say what your proposal is about just 60 feet.
Oh, so that if the cottage and the common space are 60 feet apart, whether the door is part of that or not, you're still visually at 60 feet, whether that's, works out to be 80 feet in walking distance because the path goes and takes a right angle and, you know, whatever it may be, that doesn't seem like a big difference? Maybe it's adding some sort of a provision that all cottages must be connected by pedestrian corridors that gives them a little bit more flexibility so that you are making sure that they have some pedestrian access to the common area, but we're not tying their hands so tightly on how many feet that can be.
Adam, 60 feet is 60 feet whether it's walking or looking. So, I think that's one of the things that walking distance from the corner or the whatever, whatever, the simpler you can make it, the better.
Okay. So, let's do 60 feet. So, 60 feet to the nearest point of the common open space. The common open space shall have cottages abutting at least two sides. Each cottage shall be connected to the common open space by a pedestrian walkway. Does that work?
You want to read it one more time?
Sure. Yep. So, with the modifications in the beginning that Nancy suggested, it'll read, "At least 90% of the cottage units shall abut the common open space. All of the cottage units shall be within 60 feet to the nearest point of the common open space. The common open space shall have cottages abutting at least two sides. Each cottage shall be connected to the common open space by a pedestrian walkway." We use common open space a lot, but...
Hey, it works.
Good.
Our folks are good with that. It's clear. That's a good catch, Peter.
Okay.
Can I?
Please.
Was sleeping when you were on B.
Sleeping on which one?
Covered main entry, private outdoor. So, in my driving to and from the backwoods of Pittsburgh, there are some of these cottage-type, old, old, old cottage-type developments that were for factories, and those covered porches have been converted into many things, which would be enclosed with plexiglass or plastic, whatever, or whatever they use. They're very creative. So, I don't know if we say that has to remain open, if that's because it makes, can make it living space, which people have done.
So, in theory, people are required to get building permits to convert the porch to living space, or even an open porch to a glassed porch. And so, when that building permit was being applied for, the zoning administrator and the town administrator would be reviewing the zoning ordinance to make sure that that permit is in compliance with the applicable ordinances, of which this would be one. So, there should be a safeguard there. That person would be required to get a variance if that's something they wanted to do. We may, we may look to include some language of sort of defining what a covered porch is, that it is open on one side or...
Yeah, the word "open" would be helpful.
Okay.
Remain open.
And I, so if, if it were open on one side, I mean, obviously, sometimes there are porches sort of set back into the middle and the rooms come out on two sides, and is that, do you all feel like that fulfills the intent of the regulation?
Okay. I mean, if it's open, it's not going to be livable space, right? So, that'll be...
I, I'm going to push back on that a little bit. That feels like a French balcony to me, and the idea of a covered porch is it would be open on two sides in my mind because it allows air to flow through, and if it, if it's part of the footprint and the front door is set back, but it's not directly facing the common area, you'd have it open on two sides. So, it feels to me as if two sides is kind of a minimum.
Okay. I'm awake.
Thank you.
And I'm just trying to figure out where we will put that in, so...
After covered main entry porch, would you say, comma, which would include at least two open sides?
So, covered main entry porch, open on at least two sides.
To create a private outdoor space protected from the weather. Does that work?
Yeah, I think so. And just to, as a matter of making sure we're all thinking, you know, sometimes, especially if you look at, you know, this type of development on much larger scales, kind of common in older urban neighborhoods where you had, you know, the large American four-square driveway, large American four-square, and you look at those front porches, and oftentimes, they had like structural lattice built in the openings on the ends with, you know, whether there were vines or whatever growing on them, or whether they were simply there as an architectural element, we would consider that to still be open from our standpoint.
Okay. Yep, that's a good point. So, thanks, Adam, for that. Thanks, Ann.
Okay. All right. So, then, in, back under proximity to common open space, I think we should just look at the B section under there and make sure we didn't need to change anything. For the purposes of cottage court, housing common open space shall be the central space that may be used by all occupants of the cottage complex. There's a part of me that wonders if that needs to actually, that should probably be an official definition, that we should be capitalizing it in all the places in this and then adding it to the definitions section? Okay.
You can leave it there and just have it be a proper definition?
Yep. Okay. All right. Private open space. Any thoughts on that?
Having managed subsidized housing in my early real estate career, parking and locking bicycles to fences is a real issue, and I don't think we should put it in this ordinance necessarily, but when there's a fence on private open space, people might easily use that for chaining barbecue grills. And so, I guess my question is, excuse me, is this really private enough? Can have a small hedge, picket fence, or other similar visual separation? I think that kind of thing has to be covered in the, in the management rules and regs of the HOA, so I'll, I'll stop my comment on that. Thanks.
And just to make sure that everyone, it's, it may be separated with those, so there's not a requirement that they be there, which could have pluses and minuses. If it's not there, then you can't chain something to it, but if it's not there, it may not shelter the outside view of, you know, some things that may be less pleasant to look at.
Especially given the proximity.
Just wondering, oh, and we have a waivers section at the end. I'm sorry, that's just... So, when we get to the end and talk about those, I think we should talk about moving that to the beginning to just be standardized with how we format other sections, but what I was just looking at is the concept of, and I know we talked about this at one of our earlier meetings, but of some sort of required storage space for all the things in your life that don't necessarily fit in a small cottage. Storage lockers of some capacity, or a shed, or, you know, where are you putting your kids' bikes in the winter, or your snow tires, or, yep.
Yeah, we did talk about that. What would you...
It certainly adds a cost, you know, that I think developers often have, there's not very little return on those sorts of things, and so, we want to be mindful of that, that we're trying to write something that actually has some feasibility to it. But at the same time, I think it is an important, you know, it's one thing that I had really pushed to impines on, making sure that there was bicycle storage and things. If we're encouraging development in an area of town that has some ability to bike or walk to work, we want to make sure we're providing the amenities that support that. So, they were able to make that work. I don't, I'm trying to have a concept for how much space per unit are we talking? So, if it's, each unit needs a 10 by 10 space, and it's a 10-unit development, you know, you're talking another 1,000 square feet of space, and, you know, what size shed does that work out to? I mean, that's a, that's a barn.
Are you, are you talking about if there's no garage? Because some of these photos indicate like a garage underneath. So, if there's a garage, then it's sort of moot, that extra storage space, as compared to a building that doesn't, of units that doesn't have that garage, square footage? And so, you would need that which you are describing now. And so, do we want to be open to both of those things? And are we writing them and having them appropriately appear where we need it to?
And that's a good point, Amy, and I'm just flipped to the covered parking section, which is two pages ahead on page six. It starts on page five, but it's really on page six where it talks about the garages. So, about halfway through the paragraph, it says, "Parking areas shall be attractively landscaped to create screening from adjacent properties and street rights of way and shall meet applicable parking lot landscape standards. Off-street parking may be located in or under a cottage or a parking structure such as a single or multi-vehicle carport or garage. Rear-access garages under parking increases open space when feasible." Okay. And perhaps we're into the weeds on this, we don't require these things of typical single-family homes, and, you know, I think that's something to keep in mind that...
You mentioned something earlier that was, might be part of that HOA organization, and that's going to be up to that place to do their organization. They don't all have to be the same, do they?
Yep.
No, so they could decide if they wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's the, that's the rules and regulations of the HOA, or bylaws that they establish. Developer writes them, and then they're changed as they needed to.
Okay. So, unless anyone objects, maybe we leave that as it is and, okay. Any other comments on that section for the private open space? Okay. Cottage floor area. So, this is where we discuss the maximum sizing and the... So this is where we discuss the, the maximum sizing and the breakdown between the two floors. Any thoughts or concerns?
I, I just want to make sure we're being consistent in the way we're measuring square feet of a, of a residence. We talk about net square feet, one and a half times the area of the main level, net total floor area, ground floor area. I just think we need to be consistent. I mean, our existing bylaw uses living space, I think, right, Adam? So let's just be consistent.
Under A, is what we're really getting at, the building footprint?
So is that gross, gross square feet out to out without overhangs? So it's the foundation at the dirt, so to speak?
When we use building footprint elsewhere, it includes the overhangs. So your building footprint has to meet setbacks. If your overhangs go wider than your, your foundation, those are part, they have to meet the setbacks too. So if we use building footprint, that's something to keep in mind, that that will shave, you know, if you've got a 25-foot-long building and your eaves are 18 inches on each side, that does shave a bit of the thousand square feet off with exterior. So if, maybe if we say the foundation footprint, is that more clear?
So that would allow bay windows?
If they were bay windows that sort of are cantilevered from, if they're built...
Right, not at the footprint, which, when houses are close together, that's what property builders would want to do, right? To expand these, this space in a kitchen with a bay window that has a light and somebody puts plants on it. I'm just thinking, these, these structures are close together. I'm not sure we want to include bay windows, which are attractive features, breaking up flat walls. But I'm, I'm not sure we can afford that when they're so close together.
Isn't there a difference between a bay and a bow? And is it the bay you can wa, there's floor, and the bow is just...
I think bay, bay typically refers to the geometry being a traploid.
It pops out from the side. You can walk up there.
The bow is typically a, a flowing arch.
Flowing, yeah.
So sometimes bay windows do go to ground floor level, and sometimes they're windows...
Oh, no, I was just saying, but the, as you say, it pops out so that, but the, whichever one it is, just the window itself is rounded. So they can get the light and everything, what I'm saying is without it popping out on the side. If they put in a larger window in the space, even a curved larger window, whatever kind that is.
Yep. Do we want to just say that interior living space may up to, the first-floor interior living space? Does that keep it cleaner?
You're talking about C?
Uh, A, is what I was...
A, 1A. The ground floor area may be up to 1,000 square feet of living spaces. Is that what you're saying?
Or the interior living space on the ground floor may be up to 1,000 square feet, or, I mean, however, I think either way works.
Then in C, we talk about total 1,800 square feet times the main level area, or 1.8.
It's the actual words, I think, that are, may not be interchangeable if the, that was not the intent. So if you're, if you're trying to say that the total amount allotted for each of these things, then you should be consistent about, not you, but we should be consistent about saying it the same exact way, so that there is no gray area for somebody to say, well, what is maximum ground versus my ground? Somebody may be, if they're just reading them, misconstruing based on what, what it is we want them to understand.
I guess to be consistent, now that I read this over, the three, A, B, and C together, and try to meld them together, I think we need to, my suggestion is we stay with 1,000 square feet and not talk about gross square feet or foundation, at the foundation line or whatever, because it's used in B and C again. But in A, we should say 1,000 square feet of, of living space, so it's consistent with our existing bylaw. And that becomes a definition that ripples through because you're using 1.8 times that number, and then you're saying 25% can be larger, up to a maximum of 1,800 square feet. So you need to use the same definition of square feet for all of them, and I'm, I'm comfortable with living space, so it's consistent.
And to be clear, that's interior living space, not including the private outdoor living space?
Yes.
That would be my suggestion. Yes, it's unheated.
So the ground floor area may be up to 1,000 square feet of interior living space?
I don't know what you do about unfinished basements, but that's...
And should we say, as the language in B, shall not exceed 1,000 square feet of living space? What, is that different than may not, may be up to 1,000 square feet?
You're in C, Charlene?
Well, I'm looking at A and B.
They're saying...
Shall not exceed.
Kind of two different ways of saying the same thing, right?
I think so, and I wonder if we should, that's what Amy's point is.
Except there, it's using net square feet. So net of what?
Yeah, well, I didn't mean to be in the weeds about it.
No, you can read the thing many times.
It's just that if you run your eyes down the page and you have to think to yourself, okay, I have to follow these and such things, what strikes you is maximum ground floor area, ground floor area, net total floor area.
So if B says, because I think net, it gets confusing, so if B said, the total interior floor area? To sort of keep the consistency with now changing, saying interior in the first one?
Yes.
So the total interior floor area of each cottage shall not exceed one and a half times the area of the main level?
That would be fine, Adam, but then in C, it talks about, yeah, right. In C, it says 1.8 times the main level, so those need to be consistent.
Up to 25%.
Right, that's, that's a call-out for those larger ones, though, right?
Right, but you'd never get to 1,800 if, if it's, if the maximum is one and a half.
But that's only for 25% of them, so...
Because they may go to 1.8 times instead of 1.5 times.
So they're not constrained by that prior.
Okay, if that's what, yeah, that's...
That's how I read it, but is that what?
Let's make that clear, then, that's fine.
Okay, so if...
If you just say that above it, except for however you want to say it, it's appropriate, if B says, allows for C, as opposed to immediately saying that now it can be 1.8, that 25% can, saying that, but it's, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and I wonder if we, instead of making it C, if it's BI?
Exception.
Yep, so that it's not a separate one, we just bring it in under the B?
Yeah.
That's good.
That's a good idea. Okay, so B will read, "The total interior floor area of each cottage shall not exceed one and one-half times the area of the main level. Up to 25% of the units may be larger, up to a maximum of 1,800 square feet, let's add, of, of interior living space."
You want however in front of that, up to?
Um...
Staying in B.
I wonder if we say a maximum of 25% or up to is a little funny for...
Well, it needs to be an exception to, to be, I guess is what Marilyn's saying. I think that sounds right to me. So after main, one way to do is after main level, you put in a comma and say, except that, up to 25% of the units.
Yes, yeah.
We're going to move, C is going to become I, right? Because you're going to bump it in?
Right. So maybe we say, A development, A development may include up to 25% of the uni, yeah, that gets wordy.
May allow up to 25% of units to be larger, such that... Can you, can you grab one of the mics there and just...
Steve Root, Citizen. Two places, it talks about ground floor, and then it talks about main floor level, and I'm looking at the picture a couple pages with a garage in the basement. And so I would make it all main floor level in the preamble in A.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
I'm sorry, can someone say that again? I was trying to, yep, look at one part at the same time.
Point's well taken in, on page four, item E1.
Yep.
But A, it would be the main floor area may be up to 1,000 square feet. And... Sorry, yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, and, and one above it. Thank you, Steve. The maximum main floor area.
To me, that gets, from the administrative standpoint, what are we considering, main? Are we, ground is easy, we know where the ground is, right? And so, it's easy to know that that's your surface level.
But if the, on page six, the garage is underneath.
Right, so...
That's below grade?
Does it?
Does it? It's the lowest.
Could you do ground floor from the main?
Because even a, even a walkout basement is below ground, right? And so, a one-side opening below grade on three sides doesn't make it the ground floor. So then, main doesn't provide quite the same clarity, I don't think. I, I think there's a, there's a good point that maybe there's a word that we need to change that maybe is not ground or... Main.
Couldn't it just be from the, from the front entrance? Because it's always going to be at the, that's the one entrance that we know is never going to be below grade, because it's going to be off the common space, right? That's clearly the, that's what Steve's getting to.
Right.
And what you're getting to is, that is what anybody would understand to be the main floor, even if there is a lower level through the garage. But if you said, if you could say like the... I'm confusing myself now, but if you could somehow tie it to that entrance, maybe that would make it.
Isn't, isn't the ground or main floor the floor that contains the entrance to the unit? That's your, what you're saying, yeah?
Not always. I mean, sometimes there are properties that are built into a hill that have inverted floor plans or...
Or a split level.
Right, but I'm saying, couldn't we decide, though, in the, in this case, that it's the entrance coming from the common space? Because that's going to be the one thing that's going to be at grade, if you will.
So...
So you're talking about using ground level now instead of main level? Yeah, or not?
I think so, and then putting parameters around what is ground level. So then, I think in the, in that preamble, under cottage floor area, simply adding a sentence of, "Ground floor shall be identified as the floor with an entrance to the common open space."
Something like that. I think then, does that, Steve, does that make sense to you? Oh, fair enough, okay. Does that, what do folks think? Does that make sense? Because it's kind of then, as you're walking in, right?
So, Steve, just so, because I'm interested in your opinion on it, so the cottage floor area section, adding a sentence at the end that says, "Ground floor shall be identified as the floor with an entrance to the common open space."
Right.
Yes, I believe so, so that we're consistent.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That doesn't... I'm thinking of the ground floor. Hilltop has split entry levels in the one units. They come in on the ground floor and go up and down at the same place. They don't go to the same place, obviously. They go to two different places. I, I, they do.
And so I think in that scenario, you would look at those as, that's how they're using their first level and their second level. Hilltop gets tricky in that then there's like a tri-level. I think we would be saying, that is not a design that would be allowed here, that we're capping it to that two-level.
Which I think makes sense, because otherwise you lose the cottage vibe. Yeah, and I think that's not what we're after.
Exactly.
But good point, Ann.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Page five, everyone good? All right. Yards, building setbacks from exterior lot lines. So minimum front, rear, side yard structure, those should all be capitalized. Sorry. Minimum front, rear, and side yard structure setbacks from the exterior lot line shall adhere to the underlying zoning requirements. I think that's pretty straightforward, same expectation there as everywhere else. Cottage court housing development, building separation. All buildings within a cottage court housing development shall maintain a minimum separation of 10 feet between cottages within a cottage court housing development. This shall be measured from the nearest point of the exterior walls. Accessory buildings shall comply with building code requirements for separation from non-cottage structures.
Yeah, you doubled up. First sentence. So all buildings within a cottage court housing development shall maintain a minimum separation of 10 feet between cottages, period.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else in that paragraph?
And that, someone, was it you, Peter, that brought up the, the eve and all that stuff before? And bay windows and all that? Does it, do we have any concerns there?
Well, I think we would still want to maintain a minimum of 10 feet. If you have a two-foot bay window sticking out on each unit, that's not an insignificant reduction. You're ending up with six feet there that...
Right, then it would be too tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I was thinking, because we talked also about the overhangs as well and all that, but we're not talking about that.
I think here, because it says nearest point of the exterior walls, and we would consider the overhangs to be roof structure?
Yep. All right, I just wanted to make sure we thought through that.
Yeah, and to put it in perspective, I'm about 10 feet from Janet. So when you think of two walls, I mean, this is tight, so I think it's important to have that.
Yeah, no, I definitely wouldn't want to have that excluded, because I think then it would be too much.
Okay. Tree conservation. Cottage court housing development shall be designed to incorporate existing trees to the extent possible. The overall site design shall take advantage of the location existing tree, the location of existing trees, as well as natural openings or clearings on forested sites. Anything? New trees shall be located to create amenities in the common open space, private open space, provide shade where appropriate, to create separation between buildings when desired, and to screen and soften the perimeter of parking areas and street-facing sides of cottage court housing developments. I think this is one spot, just want to make sure, I told Erin that we would make sure to sort of pause on this point of her view of the most aesthetically pleasing view coming from within, that this is sort of a development in reverse, where normally the, your curb appeal side is facing the outward perimeter of your development, versus here, we're saying roads and parking on the outside. So I think her concern is, is this, this sentence strong enough that says we need screening to soften perimeter parking areas and street-facing sides of cottage court housing? And then if it's not, what is it that, that makes it stronger? And then if it's not, what is it that, that makes it stronger?
And the cost consideration comes in there, too.
Mm-hmm.
Can you hyphenate "street-facing" because it'll bother me?
Yes.
Thank you.
What does soften mean?
Well, I can, I can speak a little of that since I've tried to promote commercial development next to residential districts in my career. And one of the biggest challenges is to show the neighbors that what they're going to see is actually not very much because it's broken up by trees or plants or shrubs. Your, your eye tends, to a certain point, your eye focuses on what you can't see versus what you can see, depending on the amount of, that you can see through it. Of course, the argument we always had, well, those are deciduous trees, Mr. Nichols, so in the wintertime we can see the building. So it, it is a vague term, but that's the concept, is at some point of transparency, your eye no longer looks at what's behind it, but is, but is fixed on what's in front.
And I wonder if it's really unnecessary, because if, if screening, if the intent of screening is to soften anyways, do we need to say, "screen and soften"? Won't the screening inherently soften the perimeter? I mean, is it cleaner and less subjective? We all, I think we work in the world of screening and site plan review on a regular basis.
So you want to say, "and screen the perimeter of parking areas and street-facing"?
Yeah, I do worry a little bit about what the perception of screening is. It's not 100% view blocking. And so I think that's where soften comes in, but I think how it's written, we say "screen and soften", so we are implying that screening is part of this no matter what, that that part really doesn't change? Maybe that's something we need to talk about? Maybe it's.
Well, I understand what it is intended to say. I, I just wanted to be sure that the interpretation and Peter's description helped is, is, is the same for the general population.
Yeah, I agree. And I think actually Peter raises a good point, too, that oftentimes screening, when it's absolute, like a tall fence, usually looks worse.
Right.
Right? It's actually better to have some, I mean, there are examples around town where people have put up a tall fence to get privacy, and I think it actually.
It's worse.
Looks terrible, right? And versus like, oh, there's some, you know, some arborvitaries or some other things that sort of break it up just to, you know.
I think we should leave it.
And, you know, it's, it's also, I mean, it's kind of in there to justify why it's saying new trees shall be located to create amenities in the common area, in the common open space, private open space, provide shade where appropriate. And it's saying to create separation between buildings when desired to screen and to soften the perimeter. So it's not necessarily written as a standard, but an explanation of needing to put in trees?
Do we need to say, do we need to modify "screen" in some way to say like, at least partially "screen"? Or do we need to say something like that versus like, if, if "screen", and I don't know, but I'm wondering if "screen" has an implication of like fully blocking versus?
I honestly wonder if we just remove "screen".
Okay.
I mean, we're not.
And say, and just go with "soften" then?
Yeah, anyone in a single-family home, we're not requiring that they put something in front of it that makes it so that none of us see their house ever. And I think we all hope that curbs are, curb appeal is softened. So maybe we just eliminate "screen" and to say, to create separation between buildings when desired and to soften the perimeter parking areas.
And is it just trees that can do that?
Yes.
Should we maybe change the heading to "tree and vegetation conservation"? Okay.
I think fences actually can do that, too, but I think they have to be the sort of.
I've got some big lilac bushes and stuff that.
Right, so then that covered by what Adam just said about vegetation, but I guess I also have the belief that fences can help with that, too, but not the super creepy tall ones, right? That's the, that's the problem.
And then I think where we say existing trees, we will add in "and vegetation".
Adam, have we left out softening the, the appearance of this kind of density from abutting properties? Because we talk about street-facing sides. But we don't talk about abutting properties?
Yeah, and, you know, part of me wonders if Steve and Mark, their process in whittling it down to be so specific is simply because of the cost of, the street side is probably going to be one of the more narrow sides of a property. Oftentimes they're deep and large in the back, that that could get very expensive.
It could, and we have to be careful about this. This needs to be mid-market.
And that very much speaks, I think, to Aaron's concern. You know, like she uses the example of she's a back neighbor to Hilltop, and so she appreciates the, the screening that is there. It's not a street-facing side. You know, it's not street-facing on her side, her house, or the Hilltop side. And, I mean, we could say something like, "to the extent possible, natural or existing tree and natural vegetation shall be left on non-street-facing sides."
Maybe preserved.
I think that can sometimes create false expectations because sometimes it's a field and the existing vegetation is meadow grasses, you know? It's not going to do a lot to screen.
But if we're not being prescriptive about exactly what it would be, if we said "street-facing and abutting sides", it feels like, I mean, if they planted some, I hear your point about cost, for sure, but I guess we're, we're also not being, we're not being super prescriptive here, I didn't feel like.
I think adding the word "abutting" helps achieve what we're after.
So then I almost wonder if we don't even need to say "street-facing"? So if we're saying "abutting and street-facing", that's just all sides, right?
Yeah.
Well, I guess to a certain extent, it depends on what the abutting property is. If there isn't, I'm envisioning a house that's in view, and I'm also envisioning a big field on a larger ARR property that has a house you can't see, and we're, we're now starting to enclose this with all kinds of softened landscaping, and I'm thinking my landscape budget's running out of control.
And we have taken this out of the ARR, so as it's written now, it will just be R1, R2, commercial. That being said, there are spots in R2 that look very much like an ARR.
Yeah, right, good point.
But I hear your point about cost, but I guess I think that if, because it's not so prescriptive, that I wonder if that, if we just have all sides essentially, that I don't know. I guess I just wonder if they wouldn't be able to get, get away with in a good way, not in a bad way, but get away with a reasonable approach on the, on the abutter sides.
And, so how the clause is, it's "and to soften the perimeter of parking areas", so that means parking areas, no matter where they are. And then it says, "and street-facing sides". So I think the parking, parking's supposed to be softened, whether it's on a street side or a side or a rear, how this is written, right? So maybe we're safer than we thought.
Yeah, that's right. It's, it's just parking areas we're talking about here.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's the thing that nobody wants to look at, right? To Aaron's point.
Right. Anything else is just a residential use that any of your neighbors, no matter what the housing style could be? Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's good.
Cottage cluster size, so this is actually one that we added, I think he was at the last one, that was sort of out of sequence, but no more than two clusters may be permitted per development? Anything else in that section?
You know, in all the excitement, didn't we say that we didn't want these cottage courts projects larger than 24 units? Or did we take that out?
I think that's this, so it's saying, "no, no more than 12 housing units shall be included in a cluster".
No more than two, there we go, okay. Good, 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 yeah, sorry. Duh.
All right, so then off-street parking. Obviously, we talked a little bit about garages already. Is there anything else that anyone has in there? This is where we did add the K for developments on lots served by town-owned sidewalks at the time of the development. Approval must be, must provide a pedestrian walkway that connects to the public sidewalks.
Can you hyphenate "town-owned"? Because it'll bother me.
Yep.
Thank you.
This can be really expensive. I just want everybody to be aware. Do you know what sidewalks cost on a millennial foot? We just put a big one in along.
I know what the paving cost was for just over a mile, or no, just under a mile. But that didn't include any of the site preparation because we did that in-house, so it's really not apples to apples. The, we could put a foot cap on it, so if it's within X number of feet of a sidewalk.
From a developer's perspective, I've always tried to argue that sidewalks are the responsibility of the municipality. And, and don't get me wrong, I think pedestrian access, this is really important. We're talking about a cluster of people who want access, who walk, want walkability. But I just want to be clear that this, this can push costs very high. And we do have the, the, the town does have the right to wait, to provide a waiver for it, but it's, I don't have a solution.
And so, Peter, are you concerned about the concept of them actually having to extend the town sidewalk or just the interior walkway? Because I think the intent here was not so much that they would have to extend the town-owned sidewalk along a town road, but that if there's a town-owned sidewalk, that they would provide a walkway from there into the common space?
Well, think of it, Twin Pines project, for example, the closest sidewalk was a long way away along the road. So would they have, in this language, would they have had, would a developer have to put a sidewalk in on, along a public street to meet the connected?
So in my opinion, no, because it didn't actually transcend their property.
If we're clear on that, then I'm, I'm fine with that, because that's part of site work.
Okay, so then is that, do we need to say something to make that more clear? So developments on lots.
Does distance make a difference? Any, would you try to do that? That's probably too.
That's what Adam brought up before, about if it was too far or something like that.
Yeah.
Or you could just add to the end of that walkway that connects to the public sidewalk, but on, on the project site? In other words, you're only requiring a developer to connect to a sidewalk if it's at the public street.
Yeah, that abuts the project site.
That abuts the project site.
And so I wonder if "served by" needs to be more specific? What does that mean? So it would be.
Well, why don't you use the word "transcend" or?
Abutting or something like that?
Maybe just developments on lots with existing town sidewalks?
Yeah, you wouldn't need.
With existing frontage on town sidewalks?
Yeah, you wouldn't need existing, right? Because if it's existing, it's, it's there. So you would just say with.
With.
Frontage on town-owned sidewalks or something like that?
Yep, okay, so developments on lots with frontage on town-owned sidewalks at the time of development approval must provide a pedestrian walkway that connects to the public sidewalk. Does that make it clear? Okay.
And that's something obviously we want, to your point, Peter, like this needs to be walkable, so.
Okay, and then this whole administration section, we will cut and put at the beginning of the ordinance. Does anybody have any concerns with any of it? It is pretty boilerplate.
I think it's important that we have it.
As long as it's consistent with other bylaw sections where we talk about the CUP, and I'll just leave that up to your good graces.
And so it would become number three. So under purpose before cottage density.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Just we want to, as you said, keep it consistent with the others.
Okay. All right, anything else on cottage?
Yeah, Steve? Can you just grab the mic? Sorry. You could leave it up on the podium. Thank you.
In the submission requirements, I didn't see it, but maybe I missed it. Is there anything about traffic flows?
So there's nothing specific to this, but that is part of our site plan review regulations.
And this is subject to a site plan review? As opposed to a conditional use permit?
Under A1, site plan review applicants for cottage court development shall also require site plan review. So I think that that would be inherent in all site plans. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Steve. Well, we want to keep everybody awake, Janet. It's your town budget at work here.
Well, I'm sorry, but I.
Drops back at specific times, so we turned it up to 70 when we came in, but it had dropped back to 62 because we hit 8 o'clock, I think, and so it's.
It's a way to wrap things up, right?
Well, the hard part is, is that it was getting left up high at night meetings, and then no one would be in here for two days, and so they put in times where it resets. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's not anything else on, on cottage.
Yeah, any other, just quickly, any comments from the public otherwise on cottage? Anybody? Oh, Rich?
Rich, I've seen your resident. I thought you were going to keep this meeting to an hour.
We're, well, we try, but you know, things happen.
Because I sort of have a lot of questions. So, and I do think these plans, you know, could, this could be a great addition to New London under the right location and plans. But when I see these, you know, the beautiful pictures on page three and four, do we know where those pictures are from, that we can ask questions to those developments on how much those cost? I mean, those could be million, you know, $1,000 a night rentals, I don't think is what we're after. So I'm trying, like, are people familiar with any more local cottage communities?
I, I don't know where the picture came from. If you Google cottage courts, you will find all kinds of images and happy people. So I, I get your point. I was thinking about this from a developer standpoint, if I were to do one, and I think what I would do is do it in modular. And I was envisioning a structure that was 20 to 25 feet wide and, and 30 to 40 feet deep, and therefore it would be two modules side by side, and you could stack one in the middle and then put a pitch roof over it, probably not a truss roof because the roof lines will be a little complicated. So I don't have a cost estimate, and, and this is a kind of a hypothetical example, but the answer is, is no. However, it needs to be cost-effective, and that's the concept of density.
Has anybody looked up more local cottage communities and?
Well, he did share a location in Bedford that he encouraged us to take a look at.
That's being built, and so.
Okay.
As the consultants shared in one of our earlier sessions, while this has been in practice on the West Coast for the last two decades or so, it's a relatively new concept on the more localized area. And so there are a handful of developments in New Hampshire that have recently either been approved or in the approval process. There's not a significant number of them that have been implemented here yet to point to. You know, there's the ones in Bedford that Charlene mentioned that they did point to that are in the construction process as we speak, but those pictures are not, you know, pretty yet.
So. Are you familiar with ones in Dover?
Dover is a slightly different design, though. It's obviously a much larger development. You know, it's not. It was under a workforce housing, a more specifically workforce housing approach.
But I thought we weren't.
We do, and the, you know, one of the early discussions we had in this, Rich, was that this is a part of the, the overall options of the housing landscape, which will increase the. the, the availability of diversified options. They may not be a controlled cost, you know, they may end up being relatively expensive for the size that they are, but they're providing a, an option to somebody who's currently stuck in whatever their existing housing is, that's eliminating their current housing as a possibility. And so this is a piece of the puzzle that starts to open up the property ladder again so that, you know, if somebody is staying in a four-bedroom family home because they don't have an alternative that's appealing to them, this may be that alternative that's appealing to them to move into, that then allows their house to open up, and then it allows the starter house of the person graduating to theirs to open up. And, and you know, obviously that flows down the, the property ladder. So it is a, certainly a piece of the puzzle. It naturally constrains the cost simply by the size and the density. So because the unit is already going to be smaller, it's going to be cheaper. That does not mean cheap necessarily, it's cheaper than the options that are being built. And so it's the piece of the HOP grant sort of work that this funnels out of is looking at our existing housing stock and how it's large and expensive, right? And so this intent is to control that size a bit, to try to control that, even if it's market rate, control that cost a bit.
Okay, so instead of mouthful, I'm trying to absorb it all, but, so I mean, have we looked at, have these other towns have a conditional use per, and we, do we have their examples of how those are documented that we can review and learn from?
So this is the consultants, I mean, obviously we've made modifications here today and at the previous meetings, but this is a culmination of many of those different ordinances that the consultants have either worked on or studied.
Can we see these other?
They're all public documents. I can't tell you that I have a compilation of lists, you know, we obviously.
Maybe just a few.
Yeah, I think you could probably look for it. Well, for example.
But have, I, it sounds like you, you said Bedford's one? Is it in, is there any other towns? I mean, I guess I'm looking at like Dover, and all the articles I've read about it all seem to be positive, so I'm not talking about something, but the pictures of those cottages aren't anything like the pictures that you have here. I guess I'm trying to make sure that we're fair to do an education of New London versus marketing in New London. We should give them what might be more realistic of what we might get.
But I'm not sure that it is, Rich, because I think these pictures are picked specifically to support the criterion which they're adjacent to. And so we have put parameters in this drafted regulation to get to that picture, right?
Okay.
I, I can't swear that Dover has those same parameters to get to that. Obviously, it doesn't look the same.
Yeah, it doesn't look close.
The harmony homes development is very different. I can't speak to exactly what they have on the books. What I can say is the consultants worked very hard to make sure that the pieces that are in this draft are meant to support the design that gets you to those pictures.
I mean, I was trying to figure out, there's one diagram here to, I mean, it's, the diagram isn't very clear. I mean, I had, it'd be useful to actually have a diagram that actually meets all the conditions and guidelines to see that you've put here. That diagram, I, it would be a, I don't see how that would kind of meet the.
So perhaps there's a, an avenue there that can be taken as far as the marketing and community outreach? I don't think that's something that you would actually bake into the official zoning ordinance per se. I, I understand that the, in order to help people understand when they're voting on it, that could be something that is helpful. It doesn't necessarily equate to what goes in the, the regulation. So noted.
Okay. And I think it'd be a little fairer to the town to see what we might actually get, but.
And I think that's what Adam's saying, is you could do that for the education part of it, but it wouldn't be something you would actually put in the ordinance.
Okay.
So Rich, if you flip through the other sections of the ordinance that are similar but different, planned unit development, cluster development, simply explaining, you know, that this zone can have this size lot, there's not diagrams in the ordinance that go along with, this is what a two-acre lot looks like, this is what a cluster looks like, this is what a PUD looks like. So it's just a, a difference in public outreach and, and education versus an actual legal document that is your, your ordinance.
Okay. Then, maybe a different angle. Number five, the allowable uses, single-family and duplex units are permitted. So a unit could be a duplex, right? So that's one cottage unit?
No, no. Dwelling, each unit of a duplex is a unit.
Okay, okay. So when?
So a duplex is two units, as defined.
Oh, okay, okay. Because I was trying to figure out if.
As defined in our, our zoning ordinance.
Okay. I didn't know if really that meant 10 units and a unit could be a duplex, so you have really 20 units. Okay, so really, it's only.
Right. And, and forgetting whether they're made up of single-family or duplex, it's still the maximum of 10 per acre of net developable area and maximum of 12 total for the development with no more than two clusters of a maximum of 24 in a proposal.
Okay. Can these be short-term rentals?
So we had that discussion at one point, and the overall consensus, and anyone jump in if this is incorrect, was that the owners' associations of these developments would control that much the same that Hilltop does, or Grape Pines does, or Highland Ridge, the Seasons. Any of the existing HOA developments can choose to control that or not to control that, but that these wouldn't be treated differently than anywhere else in the community where we don't currently have those standards.
Okay. But were those developments produced with a continual, continuous use, a conditioned use permit?
The conditional use permit doesn't necessarily change that. They were approved versus other mechan, in utilizing other mechanisms of the ordinance like the cluster subdivision, the planned unit development, which does provide you some, some flexibility in design, just the way that this provides you some flexibility in design. So while the, the name on the type is not exactly the same, the concept is very similar.
Okay. Some kind of apartment or units, they, are we allowing, and maybe these are, this is covered in the other ordinances, but like, can they put a large dumpster for garbage that might attract animals and rodents in, for, for garbage collection?
So as part of our site plan review regulations, we have, we have standards for screening of dumpsters, whether or not we want to require that there is a, a common trash area, or whether households would have their own trash in their garage, just the same as you or anybody else, and deal with the transfer station, you know, independently. We didn't get into those weeds. If they have a dumpster, that is protected under the site plan review regulations of which this has to go through.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I think we have all these issues. Thank you.
Thanks. So from here, if there's nothing else on cottage, yeah. So everyone has some comments on ADU stuff that Steve sent along yesterday. I didn't really have a chance to look at it, and I want to take the, the time between now and Tuesday night to take a look at it. Tuesday night, we will move forward on actually moving these things to public hearing in January. We don't have any applications on our board meeting on Tuesday night, which is great because we can, we still have some time to, that we can commit to these things. I think for something like cottage, unless we, you know, have something that comes up and springs to people's minds between now and Tuesday night, we can probably assume we're not going to have lengthy discussion on those. But I think we should make sure we allow some time to run through ADUs again and take a look at some of those comments and concerns. For institutional, just very quickly, where's mine? Sorry. Somewhere, and here I have it. There we go. So we'll take another quick run-through, but I think we are pretty tied up on that. I've been sort of debating how best to represent the, the change in including Lot 19 as part of the hospital institutional zone. You know, as we had discussed, it would be a 75-foot, the, the whole lot would be rezoned, 75-foot setback from all of the residentially zoned abutting properties, and then the traditional setbacks from any of the other hospital institutional lots or the commercial lots would prevail. And so while that's all in wording, I was trying to figure out if we need to provide a visual of that. There's, Lot 19 looks very large in comparison to the hospital, so it visually provides a little bit of confusion, to be honest, and so I've been sort of grappling with that. There are constraints on Lot 19 that are not easily represented visually with the information we have behind our, like, assessing data and stuff. So I'm still sort of batting that around. I'll bring you something on Tuesday night to look at. I think if we presented it exactly how it is, that is 100% fine, and I think that there's a marketing side of things that can incorporate some mapping that doesn't necessarily need to be part of the official submission. So we'll have that discussion a little bit on Tuesday night. And then the modification to the definition of family. So those are the, the four pieces. I think we've covered everything in family. I think we're pretty good on cottage. We'll have a discussion on the ADU and discussion on institutional in that context. It will be an official planning board meeting, but hopefully Housing Commission members, if you're available and willing to come, at 6:30 at Whipple Hall, and we hope that you can join us if you're able.
We'll have the heat on.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just have two things on the, on the hospital institutional. One, under 3A1, 3A1, the, it says licensed medical facilities. Is it possible that we could remove licensed, the, the state particularly has changed a lot of their licensing regulations over the last 10 years. So I'll give you an example. A physician practice, like a standalone physician practice, is not licensed in the state of New Hampshire any longer. It used to be, but it isn't any longer. So that could be, you know, I'm thinking about the future, that, that they've really moved away from licensing a lot of things. They don't like the, they don't necessarily like the follow-up to it, and, you know, you have an obligation with your payers, particularly if you take Medicare, to do a lot of things. But the state doesn't actually license them. And the other is further on in that sentence, so medical facilities which provide outpatient care, acute care, I would like to recommend changing the and to or, because the and would be that that, they all would be versus or, it could be one or the other of them.
That's great. And I just, for everyone sick, because the licensed medical facilities was capitalized, just flip to our definitions real quick, and it's capitalized because that must have been a, a proper phrase. It's not in our definitions, so we can just eliminate that without modifying anything in definition.
Yeah, it's just changed a lot since probably these were written. The other recommendation was in the last sentence to just, under, it says, required by Article XX, the Board of Adjustments shall determine that such use compatible with the spirit and intent of this zoning ordinance, but to maybe put in there of Article X, institutional district of this zoning, that makes it more clear. It's not, it's, the other two things are, are more pertinent, but that was just something that we thought maybe might make things more clear in the future. Do you want this piece of paper where I, where I did them? Yeah.
I wrote all of it.
I, I almost wonder, Laurie, if we want to leave that so that it's also.
Oh, because it's also commercial.
Anything outside of, yeah, and there's, there's some overarching standards that apply to all zoning.
Never mind, just forget that then.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. We weren't thinking like that, and.
Yep.
This is why we talk about these.
That is.
Right?
That's why we appreciate you coming.
Yeah, no, that's, but otherwise, this, this is, this is all great, and we'll, I will not be at the meeting on Tuesday, I'll be away.
Okay.
But Lauren, a couple of other people will be there to be able to speak on behalf of the hospital.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks so much.
And as far as the, the wording, just while you are here, under yard requirements, the front yard, rear yard, and side yard setback requirement shall be 75 feet from any lot line that abuts a residentially zoned property.
Yeah, so we talked, though, about that, the portion of the property that abuts the crescenti property. Is, what's the, is the crescenti property residential?
It is, and so.
Because that's pretty narrow there. I don't think you can get 75 feet even from what we, what we have today.
I think, I did measure it, and I think it came out. This is what I was doing yesterday afternoon, so it's already there when I left off. I think it came to like 85 to the other side of the property.
Yeah, because from a perspective of safety, if there is to be a road into that property, into the backside of the property, the police at different times have recommended that we even move our current entrance further down. So I don't, you know, everywhere else, that's perfect, it's great, it's just that limits the access to the back part of the property.
So streets can go within setbacks.
Oh, okay.
So at least the street would be there. I think where we would, so this distance here is 100 feet.
Yeah.
So it would leave you a 25-foot area where you could even have some structures of some kind.
Yeah.
I think the exclusion that could be added in here is like a gatehouse or, you know, something that is on a street that falls within that 75 feet could be allowed. We could write something in there, or you could end up going for a variance of.
Yeah, I, I'm not that worried about that.
Okay.
I don't think that's going to happen, but I think there is the potential that that could be, because in, even in the continuum work, that was where their road was. But if that's the case of how it gets interpreted with the rest of the regs, that's fine.
Yep, okay.
Perfect.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie.
I have a question.
Yep.
The use of daycare, can child, is, is childcare defined differently than daycare?
We don't define either within our ordinance now on the state level. Let's see what DHHS uses. You don't know, Nancy, do you?
Not at the top, but, you know, Anne was just, Anne was just mumbling. It could be adult or child.
It could be.
Or daycare, that's why the generic term is frequently used.
Daycare is the generic term.
DHHS uses.
And it could be adult or child, which certainly the hospital may be interested in at some point.
Well, and we already have a.
Right.
Childcare, a daycare center for children.
Right.
So childcare licensing is the DHHS term, and then that says that license seven categories of childcare programs, family childcare homes, family group homes, group childcare centers, childcare nurseries, school age program, night care programs, and residential childcare.
Is night care programs under child daycare? It's under childcare.
Yeah. Yeah.
Childcare.
So-
I mean, with, with parents working different hours, I, I want to be sure that if there was a childcare center that expanded their hours, that it wasn't excluded.
Well, you could say child or adult care.
When adult care is offered, Laurie, do you know if that is typically under a, like some sort of a medical umbrella versus childcare? They're perfectly healthy, they're just not developed yet.
No, because they're, they're simply, I mean, like the, some councils on aging do it in their communities. It's a, it's a place for people to go for activities through the day. There's usually not always medical care provided.
Senior centers.
It's a senior, yeah, senior centers do it as well.
And so maybe the cleanest thing is to just have it be a two-part phrase, so childcare and adult daycare?
Yeah.
To make sure that-
Don't even put "day."
Don't put "day."
Just put "adult care."
Don't use the qualify, just say child or adult care.
Okay, perfect.
Does it, is there a-
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Laurie, appreciate it.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Okay, I just need a motion from planning board to adjourn. Can I get a motion? All in favor? We didn't do a second, anyway. I'll second. Thanks, everybody, appreciate the time.